Test. The meeting of the Revere Zoning Board of Appeals would now come to order. Could we rise and salute the flag?
All states with allegiance to the Constitution, the United States of America, which is the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Mr. Bichilli.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. D'Angelo.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes. Yes, and Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
Quorum is present. Do you want to explain it? The, uh... The situation this evening is that only four members of the zoning board of appeals are present to vote this evening. That means on every application, the vote to approve has to be unanimous to be passed. The board has traditionally offered applicants the ability to have a hearing tonight, but they can then decide whether or not they wish to have the vote taking... Taken on the next meeting of the board, which will be August 21st at 4:00 PM in the city council chamber. So, the board will proceed with the hearings, and the applicants have the opportunity to have the vote taken at the August meeting. The first application before the board is application A 1921. This is the application of Walnut Shirley LLC, 1040-1048 North Shore Road, Unit B2, Revere, requesting a variance of Title 17, 1724, 2832, of the revised ordinance of the City Revere, minimum lot size, front and side yard setbacks, floor area ratio, parking requirements, and buffer zone between multifamily apartment parking area and adjacent residential uses to enable the appellant to raise the current structure and construct a four-story, 27-unit apartment with three commercial units at 94-102 Shirley Avenue and 59 Walnut Avenue, Revere.
Good afternoon, board members. My name is Corey Rhodes. I'm an attorney with D'Ambrosio Brown LLP, 14 Proctor Avenue, Revere, and I represent the applicant related to this property on the corner of Shirley Ave. and Walnut Ave. As was stated, this is a new development. Currently, there is a 10... 10-unit... 10-to-12-unit apartment building with some commercial use at this site. As you can see in the packet that we handed out, some of the current pictures from that site, it is a non-conforming structure. It is a bit of a mess. There is a, what appears to be a three-family in the back with a number of small, one-story units in the front. Not really a very thought-out use for the property. As such, my client has recently acquired it, and he's put together this design for a contemporary structure, a mixed-use structure that's going to add more commercial uses to this site and add a number of single and studio apartments to this site as well. Again, I want to be clear on that. These are not two bedrooms. These are not three bedrooms. They are majority studios, and we're talking approximately 350 square feet for the studios, and there'll be five two-bed... Excuse me, five-one bedrooms. Those are only coming in at 650 square feet on average. So, these are very small units. We're not looking at having families here, not multiple people living in these units. They are singles and studios. This is a property that can use with some rejuvenation, and I think it'll be a helpful rejuvenation for the entirety of Shirley Ave. And it is a property that is basically equidistant from the Revere Beach Station, closer to the ocean, and if you went back up towards the Dunkin' Donuts, the end of Shirley Ave., you have some major bus lines there as well. We think that's a very transit-oriented site, something that people will find accessible to taking alternative means than having a car at the site. The developer of this property, Jamie Russo, is well-known in the city for the properties and the high quality that he builds. He has a number of projects that he runs where his tenants just don't have cars. The way that he markets them and the way that they're utilized, the leases that they use, these units just don't have cars. The people find alternative means. They are transit-oriented. They're using the T or Uber or bus lines to get around. Beyond that, this will be increasing commercial use in that area. There's now going to be three commercial units right along Shirley Avenue, something to continue that foot traffic, that commercial base really in Shirley Avenue, something that was important to the city and to the developer. Really, the dimensional requests and the parking requests here, we think are reasonable for what's going to go in. It's a really thoughtfully designed, contemporary building, and I think it would be a great improvement to this neighborhood. We'd be happy to go over any questions that you have and get into the details.
Thank you. Seeing that this is a public hearing, I'll ask if there's any proponents, and Bob, if you...
Mr. Chairman, my name is Robert O'Brien. I live at 10 Ocean Avenue in Revere, and I am the Director of Economic Development for the city. I am here to speak in favor of ZBA approval of these variances. But before I do so, I have been asked by Ward Counselor Ira Novosolsky, who unfortunately was called to accompany his wife to the hospital unexpectedly, to also reiterate to the board the counselor's support for this project and for all of the variances requested. The counselor has been very much involved in the planning process for the district as a whole, but in particular, has been in consultation with the developer in this case, and what has emerged from that is a proposed development, its uses and scale, that is completely acceptable to the counselor and which he very much supports. Having said that, and now speaking for the city, I would just note that this is precisely the kind of development that the city has been looking for on Shirley Avenue and is finally now beginning to arrive. There are two projects on Shirley Avenue up for your review today, both of which begin to fulfill the kind of ambitions that we have for the development of Shirley Avenue, which is a vital commercial sector on the storefront and the development of reasonable residential units above that within the height limitations that are already provided. The problem with doing that on Shirley Avenue, as you know, these are very small and congested parcels, and it's very difficult to develop what the city wants and what is economically viable within the constraints of the zoning as currently promulgated. We are working in the context of the master plan for the city as a whole, and more specifically in the district planning for the Shirley Avenue, to consider the possibility of revising the zoning, but unless and until that happens, these kinds of developments simply cannot proceed. I would emphasize beyond the necessity of these particular variances, all of which are sort of interrelated and dependent on the small size of the parcel, that it is completely consistent with the development goals of the city. And I would note in this case that the developer is to be commended for having developed a very effective relocation strategy for the existing residential and commercial tenants who will be relocated elsewhere during the construction of this project, all of whom will be invited back to participate as residents and as commercial tenants in the new building. I think it's a very thoughtful, responsive, and commendable strategy for which I think the ZBA should take note. I would also note that, as in all cases when we are supporting parking variances, the developer has agreed that he will live within the constraints of those variances. That is to say, he will not negotiate any leases beyond the number of vehicles that will be allowed on-site for this development. There will be no off-site, on-street parking stickers issued for this address, and the developer is completely prepared to provide whatever he needs and not to exceed what is allowed. He is an experienced developer, known to this city, known to this board, has been very successful in developments elsewhere and in this area, and I think deserves our support. And of course, finally, the support of the ward counselor is extremely critical from the point of view of the city, and for all of those reasons, we urge you to approve the variances as proposed and requested.
So, all the restrictions will be included as usual?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I cannot go without saying that I had lengthy discussions with Ira in the ward there, and he has done a lot of work, and I commend him because he's made some changes that I agree with.
Yeah.
So, I'm sorry that his wife is in the hospital. He was definitely going to be here.
Yeah.
But he isn't supportive of these projects.
And just to emphasize that one of the aspects of the developer being both responsive and responsive... Responsible is the fact that he works closely with the ward counselor to make sure that this is something agreeable to the community and to the counselor.
Seeing that it's a public hearing, I will ask our at-large counsel to come up and speak. Tony, how are you?
Good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. I mean, normally, you know, someone... I'm Tony Zambuto, Revere City Councilor, 87 High Street, Revere, Mass. Normally, it's an election year, and a council would probably not get up here to speak in favor of development when it's probably not advantageous to my career. However, this is part of the revitalization of Shirley Ave., and I need to back up my colleague, my ward counselor, Ira Novosolsky, because he couldn't be here today. However, the other more important point is that this developer has a track record, especially in that area. All you have to do is look to the corner of North Shore Road and Dehone Street. That was a... I'm going to try to put this gently. Was a piece of property with mattresses and drug paraphernalia, to put it mildly. Nothing but needles and mattresses. Now, there's this... Some micro-units there and a yoga clinic below. Completely transformed that corner, and it's something to be proud of, to go by and not see that disgusting piece of property that was there before. There's many other properties I can point to to show the turnaround, but more importantly, this particular area, the Shirley Ave. area, is in need of this type of development. This is perfect for it, and therefore, I urge you to support this, and I'm behind it 100% to the point where I put my name on it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Anyone in favor?
My name is Loretta McGovern, and I live next door to the property, and I can only give you an emotional assessment when I...
Move that down a little bit.
I'm sorry? Thank you.
Your name and address, please, I'm sorry.
Loretta McGovern, 55 Walnut Avenue, which is adjacent to the property. And as I said, I can only give you an emotional assessment. I moved here two decades ago after a terrible accident because it was all that I could afford, and the neighborhood was such that I would not let my daughter walk unaccompanied, not at the age of nine and not at the age of 14. So, I can't help but think that there should never be any opposition to the kind of transformation that will take place by improving this area. There've been shootings at that corner. I've been privy to them. I think it's absolutely essential that people like Mr. Russo come in and transform Shirley Avenue.
Thank you very much. Are there any other proponents? Good afternoon. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is John Gomez, 86 Shirley Ave., where the property or the restaurant right next to the location that you guys are discussing. We are in favor of the development being in this location as it would beautify the street and it would, you know, help push Shirley Ave. towards, you know, a direction that we all agree is needed.
Okay. Thank you. Any other proponents? Good afternoon. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Hansi Valadesi, 207 Shirley Ave. We own the Bagel Bin Deli, and ever since Jamie's been working down over there doing the developments, we've been there 20 years. These past three, four years have been getting busier and busier, better clientele. That's what we noticed, and anything that Jamie does, any of the buildings over there, we recommend because we get a lot of customers from that. So, I'm 100% anything he does over there, any developments, anything like that.
Thank you. A point that I like your new signage.
Thank you so much.
Is there any other proponents? Hearing now concludes that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Anyone opposed?
Pat Malkianos, Sagamaw Street, you're here. There's no doubt that Jamie Russo, the millionaire out-of-town developer, does great work, and there's no doubt that this is great for Shirley Ave., but the variances that we keep giving up is problematic, and to think that we... That they won't have cars and stuff is unrealistic, and you know that the city really doesn't enforce parking issues, so you know that that never gets resolved either. So, my point is, why can't developers be forced to stay within the restraints that they're allowed? In other words, and I really don't know how that works, but be less apartments or smaller size rather than that we keep giving out variances. Thank you.
Are there any other opponents? Anyone else? Hearing now concludes that side of the hearing. Any members to speak? Okay, if we can go on to the next calendar item number. The next application before the board is application A 1922. This is the application of Eastern Equity Partners LLC, 1040-1048 North Shore Road, Unit B2, Revere, Mass., requesting a variance of Title 17, 1724, 2832, of the revised ordinance of the City Revere, lot size, front and side yard setback, floor area ratio, parking requirements, a minimum buffer zone between multifamily off-street parking areas and adjacent residential uses to enable the appellant to construct a four-story, 18-unit residential apartment and two commercial units on Lot A and B at 177 Shirley Avenue, Revere.
Good afternoon again, board members. My name's Corey Rhodes. I'm an attorney with D'Ambrosio Brown LLP, 14 Proctor Avenue, Revere. I represent the applicant, Eastern Equity Partners, related to this property at 177 Shirley Ave. This is a few blocks away from the last property. This is closer to the beach across the street from the St. Jean's Credit Union. This proposal is for a 18-unit residential apartments with two commercial units on the ground floor. Again, a mixed-use building of a very similar concept to what we just talked about. This is small units, all studios, all one bedrooms, no two bedrooms, no three bedrooms. Around 300 square feet for the studios, which are the vast majority, and around 600 square feet for the one bedrooms. This is even closer to the Revere Beach Station. I mapped it out on Google at being about 100 meters or so, which, back from high school track, I could do that in probably 12 seconds. track, I could do that in probably 12 seconds on a good day. But that's just how close we're talking to the Revere Beach Station. It is right basically underneath this property. Not to mention the bus lines that could connect, the 110, the 117, and the 411 as well. Really a kind of commuting, transit-oriented property. As we went over in detail, we've been working closely with Ira Nowosowski on this project, and it's something to revitalize Shirley Ave., kind of continue a trend to just improve the entire streetscape, and that's what they're going for here. Again, this is another entity involving Jamie Russo, where he will be implementing the same types of policies and procedures that he uses at other properties to really minimize impacts on the neighborhood and on parking, and to build a very quality product. We are very happy to go over any questions you have. We think this is a very -- it's a gorgeous building, and something that'll really improve the area and will be a betterment to Shirley Ave. Any questions, we'd be happy to go over them.
Thank you. Bob, if you would like to speak?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Robert O'Brien. I live at 10 Ocean Avenue. I'm Director of Economic Development for the City of Revere. We have submitted two letters of support, one for the previous project and one for this. I will not repeat everything that I said with regard to the former one, but it all applies to this one as well, with the exception of the -- there's no need for the relocation strategy in this case because we're talking about developing an essentially vacant parking lot. I would reemphasize, however, the importance of this kind of development for this district. It is precisely what Shirley Ave. and the Shirley Ave. area needs. It's what the city needs. And with all due respect to a previous commentator, if we support this kind of projects, we must support the variances which allow it until such time as we change the zoning, which is already in process. Without these zoning variances, we will have a continuation of what we have long had on Shirley Ave., which is a lack of development, a lack of any development above the first floor, a lack of the kind of TOD residential units that this city needs. And with regard to the parking, again, they will abide by the restrictions that they are hereby requesting, and I can assure you, they will be enforced, as they have been enforced elsewhere, by the city. So for all of those reasons, we support this, as we did the previous one. And I would reiterate the request that I speak in favor of this on behalf of Ward Counselor Ira Nowosowski, who supports this project for all of the reasons that he supported the previous one. Glad to ask you any questions, but other than that, thank you.
Any other proponents? Hearing -- okay. Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Craig Halagian. I'm a director of budget of this project. I own the property at 191 through 199 Shirley Ave., which is the building that houses the 711 and all the way down to the Bagel Bin. I'm in favor of this project. I originally bought the -- my building 20 years ago as a vacant building. Shirley Ave. was a much blighted area back then. There was a lot of crime, a lot of vacant storefronts and vacant residential units. Over the years, this has changed, albeit slowly, but under the guidance and direction of Ira Nowosowski, who's not here tonight, that has been a steady, a positive change. Particularly in the last few years, it's even accelerated further. The reason that investors and developers, you know, spend their money on areas like this is to not only, you know, have a winning investment, investment that's sound, but also to improve the area that they're investing in. And that was the reason I came 20 years ago. And I know that's the reason why Jamie's, you know, spending his time and effort in trying to revitalize that neighborhood, too. And he did a tremendous job with the building he worked on directly across the street from my property, which was a derelict property that was rampant with, you know, drinking, drugs, and every other thing you can imagine. So Shirley Ave. continues to improve, and I think projects like this are exactly what Shirley Ave. needs. And Jamie's reputation speaks for itself. He does a tremendous job, and I'm in favor of this project.
Thank you, and I look forward to having you in front of us one of these days.
Thank you.
At least I hope. Are there any other proponents? Hearing now concludes that side of the hearing. Any opponents?
Pat Malkianos, Sagamaw Street. I feel the same way. It's all about the variance. I don't know what Mr. O'Brien's saying about some rules or ordinances or whatever changing, but whatever the laws and ordinances are of today, I would like for -- I'm not trying to take anything away from this out-of-town millionaire developer or doing nice stuff at Shirley Ave. I'm all for that. But I don't want to keep giving out variances because it's only hurting the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Hearing now concludes that side of the hearing. Any members wish to speak? I just have to reiterate that this one, I had spoken to Ira in length, and there were several discussions on the facade, the type of units, even the microunit that they reduced it even more. So again, Ira is in full support of this. I know that this was very lengthy discussions with Ira and the developer. So I just want to let it be known that Ira is in full support of this. And do we want to take out a blind and do a roll call on these two? That was the wish of a member? Okay. If we could take the calendar item one and two and call for a vote.
Do you wish to proceed to a vote?
Do you wish to proceed to a vote? Yes.
This is on calendar item A 1921, located at 94 102 Shirley Ave. and 59 Walnut Avenue. Question now comes on granting the relief requested by the appellant. Mr. Bacilli?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. D'Angelo?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Pelton is absent. Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes. It is granted.
If we could take calendar item number three?
You mean two.
I'm sorry, calendar item number two.
The next item before the board is Application A 1922. This is at 177 Shirley Ave. Question now comes on granting the relief requested by the appellant. Mr. Bacilli?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. D'Angelo?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Pelton is absent. Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes. This is granted. The next application before the board is Application A 1923. This is the application, Mr. Khan, 520 Beacon Street Apartment 4F, Boston, requesting a variance of Title 17, 1724, 1724 010. Of the revised audences, the City Revere. Minimum lot size, proposed Lot 14, and minimum rear yard setback for proposed Lot 14 to enable the appellant to petition the City Revere Planning Board to subdivide lots 4 and 5 Pines Road to create new Lot 13 Pines Road comprising 9,930 square feet, and new Lot 14 Pines Road comprising 5,370 square feet at 26 and 30 Pines Road, Revere, Mass.
And name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Joe Small. I'm a land surveyor from Hancock Associates. I prepared the survey to divide the property, and what we're proposing is a division of a property line between number 26 and number 30 Pines Road. The existing property lines were created in 1947 and created some rather odd configuration of lots, and the buildings were built, I believe, a few years later from that. What we're trying to remedy here is the fact that the lot lines for number 30 really block the yard of number 26 and come into it right in front of the house. So what we're proposing to do is to change the property line so that the rear yard for 26 is actually on the property for number 26. And we believe this creates a better use of the property. It's more consistent with the historic use of the property and more equitable division of the frontage on the ocean. I have brought additional photographs if the ones in the package weren't good in a larger version of the plan, if the little versions in the application were not clear. But this really, as far as I can tell, doesn't really affect any of the other neighbors. It's all going to be internal to just these two lots. So we really feel it's a relatively minor request, but that's what we're proposing.
Okay. Seeing that this is a public hearing, I'll open it up for proponents and ask if the Ward Counselor wishes to speak. Good afternoon, John.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I understand this is going the planning board, but I'm just here to question the proponent, the attorney here. There is no more building going on down there? You're not --
Excuse me?
There are no other buildings going to be?
There's no more development proposed for right now. These buildings are going to stay as they are.
Okay, very good. That answers my question. I'm just here to make sure that there are no additional dwellings being built on that property. It's a nice area, and it's a tidy area now, and we have rezoned the entire Point of Pines several years ago to exclude multifamily dwellings. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Hearing now concludes that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Hearing now concludes that side of the hearing. Any members wish to speak? Did we do a roll call? Do you want to -- you wish to continue to have this voted on tonight?
Yes.
Question now comes on granting the relief requested by the appellant at the aforementioned address. Mr. Bacilli?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. D'Angelo?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Pelton is absent. Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes. This is granted. The next application before the board is Application A 24, 1924, of Stephen Gemelli, 22 Clark Road, Linfield, requesting a variance of Title 17, 1724, 1724 010. Revised audences, rear yard setback to enable the appellant to construct a two-family dwelling on Lot 15 at 924 Winthrop Avenue, Revere. The zoning board of appeals previously granted a variance on this matter as A 1907.
Good afternoon. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Stephen Gemelli, 22 Clark Road, Linfield, Mass. I was before this board a couple of months ago, and I got some variances. Unfortunately, I believe I was a little too generous with the rear yard setback that I applied for. You know, I went out there and revisited the situation, and the lot slopes from back to front, five feet. And the previous dwelling that was torn down was five feet off the rear yard. But that slope creates more steps for the dwelling that I proposed. So I'm estimating that that's going to put me at about nine to 10 steps plus the landing, which pushes, you know, pushes out about 15 feet or so. I felt it was a little too close for comfort for the existing granite steps that are there, which I want to keep. So I -- we decided to come back and push the house back a little bit more to leave more of a comfort zone for the front of the house. Plus, it does give you a little bit more room for landscaping and curb appeal. So that's why I'm back here, to revise this rear yard setback. Like I said, the previous dwelling that was torn down was five feet off the rear, so I've doubled it, you know? And that's basically why I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other proponents? Hearing now concludes that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Hearing now concludes that side of the hearing. Any members wish to speak?
No.
Do you wish to have us vote on this this evening?
Yeah.
Okay, roll call.
Question now comes on granting the relief requested by the appellant. Mr. Bacilli?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. D'Angelo?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Pelton is absent. Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes. This is granted.
That concludes the meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Our next meeting will be August 21 at 4 o'clock. Thank you.